So at this time, the Iredale States Committee of the whole is now open and in session for the month of March 2022. It is our policy to begin our board meeting with a moment of silence. Where board members, staff, and the community can pray and reflect in their own way. Ask you to pray for us as a Board of Education that our decisions will be the best for our children as we move forward completing the process or move through the process of completing our work. Please join us at this time for our moment of silence. Thank you. If you'll please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The COW meeting, or the Committee of the whole, was designed to be an informal informational gathering meeting of the boards, for the Board of Education. Hopefully, everyone is aware already that there is no public comment period during the COW meeting each month. This is reserved for our monthly Board of Education meetings, which will be held in two weeks, I believe, on the fourteenth of March. We welcome our stakeholders' viewpoints. We will specifically ask for proposals at the COW meeting, which are exploratory in nature. Please do not make assumptions about our intentions or future possible actions based on the questions asked by the Board. We're simply trying to inform ourselves and gather facts on issues before the Board of Education. Dr. James, members of the Board, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Not at this time. Chairman Carver.
That being said, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented then?
One more second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennington, second by Mr. Kelly. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? So we have adopted our agenda. The first item then, on the agenda for tonight, is the 2021-2022 Summer Program for EOG, Ms. Laura Elliott.
Good evening, Chairman Page, Dr. James, and members of the Board. So each year, I bring this program to you. State requires us to get approval from our school board. This is called the Summer Program, and what this is, is... Yeah. Oh goodness, I feel like I was loud anyhow. But the Summer Program allows, and is an option for students to come back and retake the end-of-course or the end-of-grade test after school is out. So the schools will offer them a remediation time, and then they'll get to come back. The advantage for the students coming back and retaking, these are only for those that are not proficient. If they come back and they retake the test and they become proficient, then that adds to the school's proficiency rate. It does not add into growth, but it does improve their proficiency rate. So the state requires us to come to you and ask that we were able to do this again. The options at the high school level, we have credit recovery, and credit recovery are for those students that may have failed a course with a grade of fifty to fifty-nine. So they would come back in, they would retake those areas in that course, so that they could get a credit for that course instead of having to retake the whole course again. We would have the option of students that were not proficient on the end-of-course at the high school level to come back and retake the EOC. At the elementary and middle school level, those that are not proficient on the end-of-grade with math, reading, or science, then they are able to come back and retake that EOG also. Do I have any questions? Yes. We get to do reading this year. Yes.
Ms. Chairman, I have a question. It said in the memo, two to six hours of remediation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that enough? Does it help, I guess?
Well, here's what we have found. So the students that come back and retake it are those students that may have not done well on that test day. We do see them come back, and because it's a smaller setting, it's not test day, and, you know, they're more at ease. You know, the schools also, because we do finish up end-of-grade before school's out, you know, they do use those last week of school to do some remediation time too.
Okay.
So the two to six hours is what we do after school is out, but there's always that remediation time before we even get out of school.
So you're okay with only two to six hours, is what I'm saying?
Yep.
And you're having good, had good report from it, I mean, previously?
Yep. Yep. I mean, we're seeing kids come back, and, you know, I love the ones that have come back and they're, you know, they made a level, you know, two.
Yeah.
And they come back and they knock it out, and they're a four.
Yeah.
And, you know, and they get that individual report, and, you know, they take that first one and they trash it, you know, so.
I guess they also know what they expect as well. That helps sometimes.
Right. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we're still going to have reading camp?
For third-grade reading, yes.
Okay, so that's very good.
Yeah. This does not include third-grade reading. This is only four through eight reading, three, eight math, five and eight science, and then our four EOC classes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because that's been...
Yes, we still have the Read to Achieve camp.
Right, very good.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, they get this trained at their home school?
I'm sorry?
What, do they get it at their home school?
Yes, they'll do everything at their home school.
Okay. Of all the students in EOC and EOG that might be eligible, do all of them come to summer school?
No, they don't.
What?
This is not our, this is not like the summer school that we ran last year, that the state, this is just that summer program where it's just optional. You know, if they want to come back and retake that EOG, then, you know, it is optional. You know, the EOG takes about three hours to take, so, you know, they can come in on, you know, a morning and, you know, knock it out and they're done. But yeah, it's taken at their home school, it's online, and it's completely optional. I mean, they are not required to do it. Whereas, you know, back, was that back about ten, fifteen years ago, when we had the promotion standards, and they had to come in, it was, what, three, five, and eight? And when we had the promotion standards, it was required that they, you know, retest at that time. But this is completely a retake.
Mr. Chairman, I would tell you this, that if there's a complaint, I think it's a good idea, but some of our students did complain because in the end-of-course test, that they didn't see the entire question on their screen. They had to scroll to be able to see the entire question with the answers and so forth, and it seemed to be a disadvantage by having to take it online instead of the old booklets we used to have.
Right.
So I would tell you, that is an issue with some of our students.
Right, and I can go ahead and let you know that the state has indicated, and it would have started two years ago, that everything will go online. So next year, everything three and up will be online. So, yep. But I think, and I don't know what the new screen size is. Tim says they're bigger, thirteen-inch screener, screen size. So that's a lot bigger than what our MacBooks are. Yeah, so that'll help.
Board members, any further questions or comments for Ms. Elliott? Would anyone object to us adding this to the consent agenda for the fourteenth? Would that be okay? Does this have to be? Anybody object to that? Consent agenda.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is local current expense budget request for 2022-2023. Mr. Steele.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Carver and fellow board members, and Dr. James. I'm here to present the 2022-23 Local Current Expense Draft. Very unique budget. For the current year, we just received current-year allotments from the state. We're still in the process of implementing the current budget as we speak. I'll go through the highlights of the budget that is in your packet. We do have items that were included in the two-year biennium of the budget. So the budget, you got a detailed budget in your packet that's for your reference and review. I will not go through that in detail. I will just hit on the highlights. So in the two-year budget, the state did propose two-and-a-half percent raise for both years of the biennium. They also, the current year, the retirement rate is twenty-two point eight-nine percent. Next year will be twenty-three point four-eight percent. So just to give you reference, in 2011, when I started, that was ten point five-one percent. So you can see that continues to increase. Health insurance is going from current year, seven thousand nineteen dollars per employee, to seven thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars per employee. For instance, there, when I started, it was around forty-eight hundred dollars in 2011. So with those raises of two-and-a-half percent, and the benefit increases locally, you're looking at seven hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars, which is number thirteen on the budget highlight sheet there. Now, the state is also mandating, as you may know, to move our minimum pay. Currently, it's at thirteen dollars an hour. They're going to fifteen dollars an hour. For the district, the fifteen dollars an hour will cost, in my estimate, with benefits, five hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. I've included that in the budget, the local current budget. We do not know at this time what the state will cover. The state may come and say it's the responsibility of the state. I know at one time, they said we're going to require you to do that, but we're only going to cover up to thirteen dollars an hour. We still have not heard what they will require, or what they will cover. So this represents the total cost of the fifteen dollars an hour. So the remainder that we have to bear the cost, federal grants will have to bear these costs, any local grants will have to bear these costs, the fifteen dollars an hour, the rate increases. So the next items in the local budget that we're looking to add, we are going to look at moving three point one-five nurses back from our Gears funds that is going away, and that is two hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-dollar addition to the budget. We also looking at adding an additional instructional coordinator position at Third Creek Middle School for fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Another exciting thing for the district and for the Board is increasing the certified supplement by half a percent. This will help, Iredale States will recruit and retain people, and that total cost is two hundred and four thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Then we're also looking at increasing the coaching and band director supplement increase by five percent for a total of forty thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. Then we're looking at adding fifteen additional part-time TAs. They would not be required to drive a bus at our high-need schools for two hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and seventy-eight. At this time, we are, in the budget, I'm proposing moving eight teaching positions back to local from ESER, which would be four hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We also want to keep in the budget the bus driver attendance and signing bonus. As you're aware, bus drivers are tough to find, and having, getting these people in is important, so we are looking to add, to keep that in the budget. We would like to move our district phone system to a hosted phone service with voice-over IP. That would be an increase in our budget of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand ninety-eight dollars. We are asking for additional forty-eight thousand for contracted services for our security at our athletic events. We are also including in here planning period stoppings that the Board approved of the forty dollars. I anticipate that still being an issue going forward for a little while. Hopefully, that will come down with that forty dollars, but that, the rough estimate's a hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. So this represents the major line items that we have in the local budget. The reductions in the local budget to online course stoppings, that's been moved to ESER with those ESER funds. But your local budget is made up of fifty-eight percent salaries and benefits. It's eight, eight point two percent of this budget is utilities. Eleven point two percent of it goes to charter schools, and then five percent of it is allotted to schools for supplies and materials. And at this time, we do not know any state or funding decreases. And when I say state funding decreases, this year, they added a lot of bonuses in that were unfunded all the way through the district, for example, COVID bonus. Federal funding, let's talk about that as it relates to local. As you're aware, the district got thirteen million dollars in ESER two, and then thirty-two million dollars in ESER three. As we move forward as a district, we as a group, a collective group, and then as a board, we have to make tough decisions with losing thirteen million dollars in 2023. We're also going to be losing thirty-two million in ESER funding in 2024. I do anticipate benefit costs continuing to increase as more state employees retire. But at this time, I will take any questions you may ask.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a clarification here. On number two, the three point one-five nurses moved from Gears, is that the big grant we got that we got ES, no?
Nope. That was federal money. We got a DHHS grant, I believe it was, yes. But this is the gear money that came along with the ESER money.
Right.
And that funding is going away.
Okay. So we're picking up these positions?
They were previously in local, and so we're moving those back.
Okay. Now, I wanted to question the telephones. Is this mobile telephones, or is this, now we did pass a big thing about landline telephones for our schools, and upgrades on all that. Is this part of that? I mean...
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Tim Ivy. He's the better expert in that, so I'm...
Can I get you to hang on just one second? Mr. Howe, that piece of paper you got right there, I just, I don't know if that's in the rest of our packets. That's what we're trying to...
That's what I got with this.
Where was that at?
That was with his, the first...
Yeah, that's...
First page.
That was in there.
Do you need this?
First page there. No, it's this one.
Okay, okay, I found it now. I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought it was in this big bunch of paperwork, so I apologize.
Now, tell me about these, this budget for the telephones. Is this...
So making it really simple to explain, currently, right now, at our own house, we have a phone line that runs into the house. But at each school, you have to have a phone server.
Right.
Phones run in, they connect to a server, that server then splits that phone line out into extensions and goes across throughout the school. We currently only have three systems that are in our entire school district that are up to date, and that's due to the fact that they have either recently failed this year, and we've had to replace them. We currently have over half of them are outdated, cannot be replaced. So over the next five years, we're going to have to replace every phone server, or we can move to what they call a hosted phone system. And a hosted phone system is where the system is hosted off-site. It's a cloud-based phone system. It allows us to always be up to date, because we no longer have to have the infrastructure at the school sites. So once we move to that, in the long term, we do save money. Initially, it creates a more higher current expense costs, but it saves you on the capital expense side where you're having to constantly update. Most of the phone server systems, even though there are few that do give you what they say a lifetime warranty, it's lifetime as long as they're producing that product. And if you've seen how quickly iPhones come out, you know that that is just a ploy to get you to purchase their product. I mean, they are backed up, and they have been good to guarantee, but that's why we decided to explore this option and move to that. It does include the phones. It includes taking us off of our trunk system that we currently have, eliminating that infrastructure, and then what ends up happening is after five years, you're able to renegotiate with them. They will not raise your price, but if the current market has it lower, they will allow you to go to a lower price. You do have to pay for phone costs, but you have to pay for phone costs with all of the systems, except for the initial time they put those in for free at that time.
Well, what I was referring to was that we voted, and this board passed a rather large upgrade on our whole systems, entire phone, and this was something that was going to be worked on, you know, as the company could get to it. And I'm curious about this figure. Is that part of that, or what?
No, sir. That was to move us to voice-over IP.
Right.
And that just means that your phones run through to the internet.
Okay.
That has been completed.
Okay.
What this does is this allows you not to have a server on the back end to get that phone to go to the internet.
Oh, okay.
So it would allow us to be able to call interdialing between schools. So instead of having each school have a phone number, if they call central office, ask Ms. McCarrier here that I need to get in touch with so-and-so, I dialed the wrong one, she can dial that extension and transfer it automatically to that school without having to redial. It opens up possibilities for a lot of things, but the feature isn't really why you go with hosted. You go with hosted because it keeps you from having to be in the phone infrastructure business on your side as a school. So in the long run, it is better cost-effectiveness. I mean, it does come out to equal out to be a better use of taxpayer dollars, in my opinion, and that is an opinion, so.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Now, wait a minute, I'm not done.
Ask Mr. Ivy.
Okay.
He's only halfway through.
Just real quickly on that. So that's over IP, I assume?
It is.
No bandwidth issues with that? I know voice is pretty light on bandwidth, but...
Yeah, we're currently using it right now. So we're just having something on the back end before we get to it. This should actually help increase it.
Getting rid of hosting, I definitely agree with from a technical perspective. We don't want to be in the phone hosting business, in my opinion.
We'll talk about in a little bit our current improvements to our network that is going to help us even more.
Thank you. I yield my time, Bill.
Thank you. Now, the next thing, I wanted a little bit more explanation on number nine, contracted service for athletics. Is this for security, or who's going to do it, and what are you going to do with it, and so forth?
So that is the contracted services for our security at our athletic events to increase that cost. So we'd have to pay as a contracted service to the officers who come to do security for us.
Well, many years ago, probably before you were born, when I was athletic director, I had to pay for it out of my athletic fund. But now the system is paying for it?
The, a lot of the athletics with COVID have, funding has, went down with them with ticket sales, so we're moving, looking to move the district.
Okay, just about. In the long thing...
Yes.
Under consulting, contracted services, now, who is this for? Is this for our EC people, or who is this?
The contracted services?
Yes, sir.
For the...
Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
You know, I would have to go back and look.
Is that the hearing specialist, or people like that?
I do not want to speak to that one.
Okay.
Without having to look. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. And on the next page, early colleges. We pay Mitchell Community College forty-three thousand dollars, is that yearly?
Yes.
For our students in early college, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that out publicly. And I believe that's all the questions I have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask one thing at this point, then. This being March the first...
Yep.
This, and March the first, and the word preliminary seem to go together at this time. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay, because all these things, we don't have, just like you say on this first page here, we don't have this, we don't have that, we don't have that, we don't have this. We don't know what the funding is going to be. We don't know what the numbers are going to be. So we can't really put a stamp on many of these things at this point. Is that not correct?
Right. Yeah, this is the process to get the budget meeting started with the county.
Yeah, and then it says we're going to go to them on March the ninth, which is really not that far away.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll just give them a draft. I mean, it's subject to your guys' approval on the fourth, I guess, the fourteenth.
Yeah.
It's subject to change, and they're aware of that. I've already communicated that to them, because our board meetings, when they needed, did not align. So they are aware of that.
Well, there might be other things, too, but if I go to the end... Well, there might be other things too, but if I go to the end of all these pages back there, it has an increase of like 6.9%?
Yes.
Is that overall?
Yes, that is our overall requested.
Overall requested increase in current fund requests from the county.
Yes.
Our chances of 6.9%?
Probably in my, coming from Catawba County and knowing and living in Iredale County, usually you get about half of that.
Well, they have a habit, they have a habit of giving exactly whatever it, whatever the increase is in the county.
Correct.
That's what they give us, maybe a point higher or lower or whatever. And six is really kind of high. So it's not likely we would get that. And so the word preliminary is really, really does have meaning.
Yes. And then I anticipate that to come down as well with the $15 an hour.
Sir?
The $15 an hour raise that I put in there or the increase of.
Right.
That will come down. I hope, it's my anticipation, that the state will pick that up, but we never know.
Mr. Chairman, on what we're discussing now, the county set a formula of CPI or, which we got like 1.9% last year. Is that, ain't that correct? Or, but they also put a caveat in there that CPI, we couldn't ever get more than growth. We used to kind of get growth, but last year they had about a 4% growth and we got 1.9. Our percentage of the county's budget went down about one and a half, 2% last year. We were down to about 28.5% of the county budget for Iredale State's schools, which is something you'll hear totally different from a lot of people. It would, the county knows what their growth was and the county knows what CPI is. I'm, and I'd asked Mr. Steele tonight, do we not have that number? To me, they won't, they expect us to have this in early March, and we should already know what the county is going to give us based on the formula that they have used in the past year. So I'm very disappointed that we don't know at this point, so he can make a little more accurate budget. Like he said, the state budget for this year is just, I mean, it's, it's crazy. So you're right, this is just a crap shoot at this point on what we're going to roll. But a lot of work goes into trying to, to guess. And I hope your crystal ball works as good as your predecessor. Ms. Wyke had a very good crystal ball that she would look at. But yeah, I too, sir, and I'm disappointed we, we don't know from the state, the feds or locally, anything. So thank you for being able to at least start the process.
Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Just a couple of things stood out to me as I was going through it. First one is, I hope your guess on natural gas and fuel expenditures is the number it is with the prices, the way they are now. So hopefully, hopefully we have some.
That was a, pretty much a guess. Usually finance officers talk and we do 1%. It probably, current will probably be higher, but.
Maybe there's some money we can switch around for that.
Yes.
Because that, that one.
Yeah. That one's, yeah, who knows where that one's going. The, the one thing I, I did notice, we, we talk a lot about hiring teachers and, you know, the crisis in education is getting good teachers and we need good teachers and just, you know, and every year we're doing headhunting, going out and doing everything. The signing bonus line item didn't go up. And with us needing more teachers and competition for teachers increasing, my, my question is, and maybe this isn't just for you, maybe it's for.
Well, we put that in the teacher supplement. So we're raising teacher supplement by half a percent.
Okay.
So we, we were trying to, a trade-off, but we do have a hiring incentive and then, of course, we may come back to you and say we need to bump that up.
Yeah, I, I would be open to bumping that up just from looking at it personally, but that's my point of view. Thank you.
And I will say to Bill's comment, so back in Bill's day, it wasn't $30 an hour to hire a resource officer for a game, and we didn't have the security issues we have in our country now, which we spent billions of dollars on to harden our schools. And we used to have a thing called Wilson's Security Guard, and of course, the pandemic, like many things, sort of took them out of business. They're still doing some work, but we were able to hire them at 10, $11 an hour, sort of have a mixture of school resource officers and security guards. So now we're having to build our own security force to coincide with the Sheriff's Department and then the, the police departments to help do security in our games. So yes, and our schools just do not take those kind of gates in. If we had them paid for, just for security out of gates, there'd be some games that they actually lost money.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, please. Mr. Steele, have we received the additional ADM monies from the state for the 500 student increase yet?
From the state, we have not. We have, and me and Mr. Rivik were talking about that, they changed the allotment, how it was going to be, to a federal allotment. And as of right now, we have not received that money. It was going to, they were doing an ADM, so the state used to get increase in whatever your ADM increase, if it was over like 100. But we have not received that yet.
And were we not expecting somewhere in the neighborhood of about $3 million for the additional students?
That would be correct.
And right now, we don't know when we might get that.
Or if we will get that.
Are you serious?
I'm pretty, yeah. They, they had to go back to the state board to look at how that was being allotted. So hopefully, we can get a better answer for you in the near future.
I'm, I'm very, I'm shocked. I don't know what to say. I, I am, I'm just shocked because we hired the teachers, we did everything, and we haven't gotten the money. Yeah, we provided the service right. The other thing that I wanted to say and to kind of piggyback on Dr. Knight was, thank you for putting the half percent supplement increase, but please find the additional to, up it to 1% increase if at all possible. If, if you can just do that, I, I think that would be critical for, you know, our teachers that we have on staff and our recruitment possibilities. And the other thing, Mr. Steele, I enjoyed your presentation and I couldn't write down all the things that I was interested in, like the increase in insurance and retirement and et cetera. Could you make a copy of your notes and share that with us, please?
It's no problem.
Thank you.
So I think for Adam, what people don't understand, about 38% of the cost of an employee now is insurance, retirement, and FICA. And that continues to go up each year. So if, if we employ 50 people on our local taxpayer budget, we're required to pay our portion of the state retirement. So we actually are seeing 3.5% to 4.5% increase in those numbers. So anytime we get less than that in local budget, we're going backwards.
I think one thing that I'd like to add on your plate, which is, I'm sure overflowing, could you contact someone, our, our senator, our representatives for this county, someone at State Department and see about this additional ADM money? It's very concerning that what I've heard.
Well, I will get with Mr. Steele, we'll contact the state CFO.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me make one other comment that I think, memory serves me correctly, I've made at least 12 times, if not 15 times before, in the cover page that you have, number 13, raises in benefit costs, $773,000.
Yep.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, if we get 5% increase in our budget, that $773,000 comes right off the top. That's not covered in any way except straight out of our budget. Now, I've screamed about that for a number of years. It has never changed, it's never going to change. But I really think that stinks that we lose. In other words, if the state would decide that our teachers are not getting paid enough and would increase their salaries by $20,000, we wouldn't be able to cover that cost. So it's, it's a, it's a double-edged sword, catch 22. I resent the fact that whenever those go up, we have to take it out of everything else that we have, right off the top. Just a comment, thank you.
Any other board member comments?
Well, Mr. Kelly, you can add in the 524,000 for the 15-hour dollar an hour increase. Total, we're looking at about 1.2 to, we're looking at about 11% that is just caused by the, by the unfunded mandates.
That comes from the General Assembly, but not one dime to pay for it, right?
Right. So I mean, that, that happens, yeah, that happens every year. It's about 1.3 million dollars.
And see, those numbers are almost equal. When you, when you add what he just added to what we would probably get if we get 2.5 million, right off the top of that is 1.2. So you didn't get 2.5 million, you got 1.3 because you had to cover the rest of these things, which are automatic. Again, I really resent that. Thank you.
I do have one other question, Mr. Chairman.
Long as it's something we can do something about.
There's nothing we can do about. I just want to know if you've heard the, the public schools of North Carolina sued because we were, didn't get fines and forfeitures several years ago from the different agencies. And it's quite a big bill that the state or those agencies owe us.
735.
735 million that we never got. And, and I was just wondering if they're going to, have you heard anything? They were going to try to recoup that?
Have not, have not had an update on that yet.
Well, we expect you to go to Raleigh and try to get our part of that.
Yeah.
Try when I can.
The other suit that I'm, that every, that every school board member in the state would like to hear about is the Leandro, where the state lost that case and they owe us a billion dollars a year additional from what they've been giving us. So I just wondered if you, if you ever hear any of those things, shoot me an email. I appreciate it.
Be sure and keep us updated.
It comes with oceanfront property in Arizona.
Let's move on to agenda item number three, use of Mount Morn building, Mr. Tim Ivey.
Chairman Carver, Dr. James, members of the board. Following, well, before I get started, Mr. Howe, are there any current lawsuits that might not be settled that could help us with any of our capital needs?
No, but we can work on that.
Okay. Just wanted to check on that before we get going. Following our, the February 7th meeting, the board had asked me to do an investigation on Mount Morn property to discuss the feasibility of what it might be as far as with renovation slash reopening that property. That property was built in 1949, it's had several additions throughout the years. Cottle Creek Elementary School was built to take the place of Mount Morn, and then as temporary basis, we ended up housing it with the International Baccalaureate Program before relocating that to Raleigh. The number of students that were at the school when it was open were 520 was the max number of students. And so what we did find out was there is a large list of unsure items that would go into any type of renovation for the school. So the data that I provided you guys or the, the price breakout showed that the initial items that we know of, these are the things that we know would have to be redone, equals somewhere around 7.5 million dollars. And then the list of unforeseen could equal somewhere into the 10s to even to 20s, you really don't know. The entire plumbing system, HVA system, most likely, once we get into it, because we will go over the 5% rule, we'll have to redo the electrical system. There's a section of the building or sections of the building that we will have to re-roof. The kitchen would have to have a major upfit, and we do have some structural issues, even though they're not major structural issues. We do have some structural issues there that we know of. And so those are the things that we are aware of. There's also several ADA compliance issues that depending on the code at the time, could end up increasing the price. The property sits on 14.88 acres of land, so the size of school would also be limited and the ability to expand the school would be limited based off of that site. And next time, I'd be willing to open up questions because I could read the entire list to you, but I provided that to you early enough.
Mr. Chairman, just one statement on the Mount Morn situation. Mr. Ivey, the key sentence in your memo, too many unforeseen costs associated with a project of this scale. I think that pretty much says it all.
Mr. Chairman, I, I toured that building with you last week and I, I do appreciate your time. And I'm going back and forth because I look at what an estimate of building, purchasing land and building an elementary school, which we're probably going to have to have. Now, the only question is, Mount Morn's not in a good place. And nobody's going to argue that point for an elementary school. And 7.5 million, and that's just a rough estimate, it could double that, it could even triple that. But as I walked out of the building with Mr. Kennington, the comment I made was seven, I think we got to offer a $7 million or something in that neighborhood, 6 million?
Yes, sir.
That's not going to buy that building in my mind. You want that building, you're going to pay more. And, and, and that's just the way I feel. But, you know, after, after hearing all this, I think we probably should sell because we've got a lot of projects we need to apply that, that money to, and we can. But my goodness, you know, to build a new elementary school and you're telling me $30 million? Wow. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll just make a quick comment. I was leaning initially to trying to fix it up. I thank you for the tour, Mr. Ivey. It was a nice of you to do that on the time outside of the, because of my work schedule, I couldn't go. The more I thought about it is the lifetime issues. Even if we do fix it up, how long is it going to last? And if we put in, you know, if you split the, split the difference on the total cost, if it's 30 million for a new one, you assume an average unforeseen of say between, you said between 5 and 20 basically is what I heard, really it's zero, but we assume 5 at least unforeseen probably.
And my, I would, I'm not able to give you an actual best estimate, but if I had to guess, I think we're going to spend in excess of $20 million on that project at that site.
And if you do that, you basically, that's 60, that's over, it's almost 70% of a, of a new elementary school. And we get a lifetime usage, probably 10, 15 years, 20 at the absolute most. When if we do a good elementary school, we get 50. And so to me, the numbers just don't add up, especially if we can use that money, as Mr. Howe said, for other things.
I'm not going to say anything because you know where I stand. I just, I need to go see Joe Biden speak.
Well, I will, because there's a few, just a few points that I, I believe the community needs to know that we've at least considered here. I agree with what Mr. Schumaker said, the, the unforeseen costs are just, you don't know. I mean, 15 to 20 million dollars, who knows? The other thing was the point that Mr. Kennington so eloquently brought out earlier tonight was our, our capacity in other schools. If I wrote it down quickly enough, I've, I've got about 2,500 roughly seats that are unfilled, that we have capacity. It's not a lack of capacity, it's the capacity's not always in the right place. And so the, the, the push is not there to spend 15, 20 million dollars on a school that we don't know how long we'll get out of it, and it's not where we want it. And at the end of the day, you, you've still got a school that my mama went to, you know, that way, way long ago that I went to. It was old when I went there, okay? And then two, my final point to this is we don't know. Mr. Howe, you may be exactly right. With the upset bid process that we could go through, who's to say? I mean, yeah, and that might take us six months, that might take us eight months every time the bid gets upset. Every time the bid gets upset, the value of the school goes up. And with the real estate market we're in today, I would like to see us put that out there and just see what it would bring us. We don't have to do it. We could stop at any point in time and say, no, we're not going to do that. But at least we would know then. You've got an unforeseen on one side of the equation and a known on the other side of the equation. Then you can make an informed decision as to how you want to proceed. So that would be my recommendation. I believe we could sit here and talk about this one until we blew in the face.
Let me make one other comment. Made this, I think everybody would understand when you say these things. We are competitively marketing today. If we go in and we don't know what we'd have to spend to renovate. I was in that same tour that we went through with Mountmore the other day. The thing that struck me was every time we made a turn, we went on to a different level. And we made another turn and you were on a different level. And then you turned again and you were under a cover that had been there for 20 years and it was not really a cover. All those things are unknowns. And then I use the example that I've made before. If I have a 1995 Cadillac and I put a brand-new transmission into it and a brand-new engine into it, notice I said engine, not motor, an engine into it, and it runs like a top, I don't know what else is going to go wrong with it, and I'm still driving a 1995 Cadillac. We're in competitive market, and when the students come, I think it would be better to offer them better than a renovated Mountmore.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that when we look at our open seats, we have a few in the Southern End. That number can be somewhat, you know, we know the growth in the Southern End, and we know that. But we've still got a couple of hundred seats, some redistricting that'll have to take place that, but we've got a, yeah, yeah, we don't need to throw bad money, I mean, good money in an old building that doesn't have the, it's just horrible traffic situation. We had a traffic guard killed down there. DOT has said they will not help us. They would not put a traffic light up for us. So I've, and I will say this, this board has really researched this. We've had a committee look at it, and then y'all went down and visited, and it, I agree. I think it's time we put it out there and see what we can get for it.
That was my other point, too. I forgot that. Thank you. Was it, the Facilities Task Force had made a recommendation on what to do with this. A group of people that we trusted, we had two board members sit on that and make up some recommendations to us. So I believe everybody's had an opportunity to comment. Everybody good to move forward. Item number four, request from Mountmore Fire Department to place a water tower on Cottle Creek Elementary. Also, Mr. Ivey.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carver, can I ask one question about the previous agenda item, just to be sure that, great, would you like me to bring back the resolution to surplus the property to the board meeting?
Yes. I would like for you to bring that. I believe we'll be able to move either thumbs up or thumbs down on that on the 14th.
I'll prepare that for you. And on to the next agenda item. Mountmore Fire Department, or Volunteer Fire Department, had reached out to Mike James and had asked about the possibility of placing a water tower at Cottle Creek Elementary School. I spoke with Mr. Todd about the potential addition of the water tower, just to make sure that the school would be in understanding and agreeance with this if the board so chooses to allow them to do that. This is at no cost to the school district. It is an above-ground tank. They would assume all costs and have agreed to paint the tank in any kind of color or design that would complement along with the school. The location of the tank would be located in the area where the buses already come in, so the asphalt is already rated to handle the weight of a fire truck, and it is currently in the fire lane that goes around the building. So it would not be in any way impeding on any future growth of the school or anything of that nature. But what it is, is an above-ground tank. There's a picture included, and it allows them to quick-fill their tanks if they need to. So in a case that we do have a fire, which I hope we never do at Cottle Creek, we would have immediate access there for fire departments. So their current situation, the property that the tank is located on, the property owner has sold that property and has asked them to relocate the tank.
So that, I think, I think maybe you've answered my question, but my first question is, why there? There's so much other open space. Why is it that they're asking to be on school property? Is it because it's flat, or it's because the water pressure, all those things you just mentioned, is that?
So there's no water pressure with it, but yes, it is a suitable site, so it is flat, and it's within a relatively close location to where the tank is already located. And the likelihood that school property is going to be sold, let me back up now, the likelihood that that school property with the new school is going to be sold is very unlikely, so they have a longer lifetime expectancy of the tank being there.
Mr. Chairman, just, I'm trying to think worst-case scenario. How could, how could this bite us in something later on? So there's a fire, they need access to the tank, and the school's letting out at the same time. That would be pretty much the only disruption to school activities that would cause.
I mean, yes, and you've been talking about a fire truck coming in to fill up and then, and then leaving. So you wouldn't essentially be talking about a large or a long period of time disruption.
Five, 10 minutes, something like that.
I mean, I'm not exactly sure, but I know it would not be something that would completely impede a bus from being able to leave. We wouldn't have to shut down the school or stop traffic unless there were so many fire trucks.
I was just trying to think worst-case scenario. How could this bite us?
Yeah, I think your absolute worst-case scenario is a large-scale fire in the area.
Mr. Chairman, the, Dr. Knight, the tank is hooked into the fire hydrants in that area. So the probability of him having to come, there's probably a fire hydrant closer.
They would use the fire hydrant.
Right, to filter tanker, right.
I did not know.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's very important that we approve this. The biggest thing is the ISO rating and keeping that low. That is a major cost savings for the residents in that area on their insurance. So I think it's important we cooperate with the volunteer fire departments and keep their ISO rating low.
Mr. Kennington.
Yeah, I agree that we should certainly partner with them. Do you know how tall it is?
I do not know the exact height.
Do you know if there's a ladder going up to the top? I couldn't tell from the picture.
I do not know that. I would be glad to find that out for you if you would like.
Find those two things out, and it kind of piggybacks on what was asked a few minutes ago, and that's safety issue, if there's a ladder. If there is, the possibility then of maybe a fence around it. I don't want any student or anyone coming in climbing on top of it.
Absolutely.
The other thing, ask if the school could do any type of painting on it, you know, happy birthday, somebody. Charge $10 to paint a rock, you know, can you paint a fire towel or a water towel?
Well, I can.
And I'm serious about that, if, because I'd like to know if the school could use it as some type of fundraiser.
Okay, I will check on that.
The other thing I'd like for you to check on, too, is the feasibility of if there is no ladder, and, well, even if there is, and I would require a fence around it if it was. But I would like to see some type of vegetation planted around it to enhance the beauty of it, to take away from the starkness of this tower, however tall it is. To me, that would be critical. I know they have to have an opening there, but at least to put some type of vegetation around it. That's, those are my questions and concerns and wishes.
From what I do know about it, I'm almost sure that they're not going to allow us to have any kind of bushes or anything, but I will, I will find out, just to be 100% sure.
Do you like the location, Mr. Ivey? Where it's at there, it looks like it's sort of at the curve of that. Do you like the location, or are you okay with where they're wanting to put it?
The location that they selected, I felt like was probably the best if you were going to look at that property. I don't think it's in the immediate way of when people come in and out, except for the students that are on the buses. And so I think if you had to pick a spot for that campus and the potential of way down the road, potentially adding a middle school section onto it or an addition, it's not.
I just don't want it to be in the way of traffic flow or anything like that. And then agreeing somewhat with what Mr. Kennington said there, I do want it to be aesthetically pleasing. I don't want anybody who wants to come up and paint happy birthday on it to be able to do that. But I would like for it to be aesthetically pleasing. I mean, they're the coyote, the Cottle Creek Coyotes, put their school logo on it or something of that nature. If the fire department would be willing to do something along that ways, I would, that would make me very happy on that. But I don't want them to paint it rust brown either. I want them to paint it a nice color and put the school logo on there, something of that nature would be, I think would be appropriate.
When, speaking with Mr. Todd, he had mentioned the same thing, that he would like to ask them to be able to put the school logo on it, and he felt like it was a great way to support the community around them as well as show school pride, so.
Somebody may be willing to pony up and do that. I think it's important to be a good neighbor, though, like Brian said. I want us to be a good neighbor and in partnership with the fire department. If you could get those questions answered to our satisfaction, would anybody object to this going on the consent agenda if, if he can answer those questions for us by the 14th?
No.
Hearing no objection, we'll also add that to the consent agenda.
Mr. Kennington, you know, it's this, as far, if there is a ladder, and it looked, appears from the picture of the other one, there may be, that they could take out 12 feet of the bottom part of that ladder, and there's no way anybody could get up there then unless they had a ladder. So that's one way.
I've seen these.
Firemen got plenty of ladders.
I don't think there's a ladder on that style of tank. I don't think, but I don't know it.
I don't believe there is, but I'll get clarification.
Sounds good. Let's get some clarification on that. Next, item agenda number six, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennington.
I was just going to say, I'd plant the bushes.
You'll also be out there painting it, from what you're saying. I don't want somebody out there painting it. Number six is approval of the blade server and school server update. Ms. Jackie Parker, yes, ma'am?
Yes, good evening, Chairman Carver, board members. We are asking for approval to purchase a new blade server and school servers for each of our sites. In your memo, we mentioned that it was already approved in the ESRS budget, $250,000 for a blade server. That was a rough estimate, and the actual cost of the server after getting quotes from two companies that are on state contract came in under that at $165,000. And while we were researching that, realized that our school servers are very outdated as well. Most of them are over five years old. They're repurposed old computers that we had, and we reused them for servers. So we would like to move some of the money in ESRS over to increase that 250 so we could purchase 72 servers for the schools. That would be file print servers and deployment servers for the schools. So the total cost of the server replacement would be $340,000.
That was, wasn't that in the budget that somebody just presented? That was already in there, wasn't it, Dr. James?
The server.
With, Mr. Chairman, have a question. With those numbers, did you take into account the, I don't know if you call it recycling cost or secondary market cost, or whatever you can get for those currently on the market?
We did not, but we can definitely look.
It's not going to be a lot, but it can offset some of the cost.
We'll definitely look into that. Yes, sir.
Any further questions for Ms. Parker? Hearing none, then we'll revisit that on the 14th then. Next, approval of storage and charging cart purchases. Again, Ms. Jackie Parker.
Yes, so our District Technology Task Force decided that since our elementary schools and middle schools would have iPads, we wanted to get charging carts for them. Currently, our elementary schools are using whatever they can find, dish strainers or whatever, to house their devices and charge them. So we worked into our budget to look at the cost of carts. And when we came to you in October, we had estimated $500 a cart. And when we put out an RFP, we found out that carts are a little more expensive than that. So we did go through the full, the full RFP cycle, and our, what we would like to buy, the cost of the carts are $787 per cart. They lock, they have a combination lock, and we can have master keys. It would be for every elementary classroom and hopefully middle school classroom. We figured the number based on the number of devices that we were ordering, and so that wouldn't put one in every elementary, I mean, every middle school. But we are looking at numbers to see if we can do that, if we have some leftover money. But the carts that our team, after the RFP, that we decided on are built locally. It's actually a company out of Taylorsville. The carts look like a podium, and I have pictures I can give to you. So if at the time comes that we don't need charging carts anymore, you can remove the charging box and it still works as a teacher podium with a side tray and storage underneath. So we really are happy with that cart. But the total cost of those carts would be $444,000. And we are seeking approval for this tonight if we can, so we can move forward because we're hearing more and more delays in the shipping of some of these things.
Board member questions?
Ms. Parker, have you had any teachers give any input on the carts? Have they looked at them? Is it?
We, we have one of the sample carts in our office, and I don't know that teachers have come in there, but several people have come in our office and have really liked it. Some of the coaches, our technology coaches have been in there, and the other ones were steel metal boxes, pretty much. This one is a dual-purpose cart, so a teacher could use it just like this with their device, even a document camera on the table that, or the shelf that pops up and all of that. And it's on wheels, so it can move around. It's not as big and bulky as some of the carts that we looked at.
Okay, thank you.
So what, I'm having trouble, I don't know what a charging cart is, but what does it do? Don't tell me it charges. What, what, yeah, okay, is that what it does? What's it connected to, then? What is it connected to?
So it has power strips built in it, so that all of, let's say for elementary and iPads, it will, each cart will store 30 devices. It has shelves in it and little dividers, so you can store the laptops, whatever you want to put in there, so iPads. And it has power strips built in, so the charger for each iPad or whatever device would be plugged into that power strip. And then from the cart itself has one cord that goes out to the wall, or two cords, because there's two different power strips. So instead of having this little container charging five over here, and this container charging five over here, and this one with five, all around the room, this is one place where they can all be charged at one time, they can be locked up.
So this is something that we had a form of before, but this is better?
We haven't had charging carts since the first round, well, no, before the first round, when we had some laptops in the schools where they shared them. We had big carts, probably two times the width of this podium. So right now, elementary schools are one-to-one with their iPads, but they don't have anything that locks unless the school has purchased it. They, like I said, teachers will use a tub or a dish strainer to house them and plug them up, and it's not all in one place, and especially the locking piece is what we like to.
And the money is coming from?
This is also in ESRS budget. And we did present this in October when the committee came back with our recommendations was to get carts for, especially the elementary and for middle school. And we'll also have a couple carts with the loner devices at the high schools and early colleges.
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate if I asked who the vendor would that be, or is this single source, or?
No, it's not single source. So the company that won the bid was Encore, but the company that actually builds the carts is CEF in Taylorsville.
Okay. And I had other questions. Are these UL rated?
I believe so.
I think it would have to be to be using this school.
And they've even worked with us to make sure that iPad chargers are changing, and they're larger now than they used to be, and they're wider, so a standard power strip won't hold them, they won't go side by side. So this vendor- So this vendor has worked with us to stagger them, so we can get the most, we don't lose any of the electrical outlets in the power strips.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
I just, she made a case for voting tonight, and I would like to, before we have a motion to do that or not, the next presentation is about the Apple devices, and I know we're worried about a time on that. So when we get, after the next presentation, I'm gonna suggest we lump the three, items six, seven, and eight together, and vote on the night. And I'm not usually one that likes to vote on committee nights, but since it's two weeks to the other one.
I really do think with it being a two-week break, with the spring break coming in there, and also with supply chain issues, I don't think that's a bad idea at all, Mr. Page. Any further questions or comments? Do I have a motion to, so do you wanna wait and make?
Just waiting here, this next one. That was my point, to keep from making one motion, three motions.
So then let's move on to agenda item number eight, approval of the Apple device refresh. If no one had any further questions on number seven, I apologize. So move on to number eight then. Okay, thank you.
Number eight is just the approval of our final price for our Apple purchase. Again, in the fall, we came to you with an estimated number, purchasing iPads for grades kindergarten through grades eight, MacBooks for staff, iPads for K-8 teachers, training, insurance, cases, all of that. And the estimate in the fall was a little over $6 million. So we've got the final numbers in and the final counts based on enrollment and everything. And we did include a 7% overage for growth, so we have some loners when some of them get damaged, or increase the number of students. So our price now for the final thing is a little over $7 million. And this number includes training. I believe it was, I have to look, it was 100 and, I think it was 100 and some days of training. I'll find that number for you, for sure. But this does include the CCTL purchase of the MacBooks for those students, along with four years of insurance. It includes, you can see the numbers in our proposal, but 5,150 devices for, that was for K-5 students with their case, 5,350 devices for 6-8 students, and that includes a case with a keyboard, and 1,083 iPads with a case for the K-8 teachers. And with all of that comes four-year insurance and a white glove service where they put the cases on, and they asset-tag them, and then they insure them for four years. And then for the staff MacBooks, the quantity we need to purchase is a little over 1,800, and that also comes with four years of insurance and the white glove service.
Board member questions?
I know that's a, that's a big number. That's a big number for me, too, but that was also in the ESRS budget. And even if this is the last purchase, if you think about the Dell devices that we purchased, and all three of these lumped together, we're still coming in at 846,000 under what was budgeted in ESRS.
Ms. Chairman, that's the one question I wanted to ask, or request, rather, from you, is I would like a spreadsheet at our next meeting showing us the total cost of all of the, what, what we refer to as the technology refresh purchases.
I've got one, I can share that with you tonight.
That'd be great, if you, if you would do that. You know, I'd like to see the total cost. Is this the finale? Is now this it? Are we gonna come back next month for more, or what?
This should be it, because we did include a 7% overage for growth, and in past purchases, we've done that as well. The only thing I can foresee is if we did get some extra carts, so that we had one per homeroom in middle school, instead of based on the number of devices, right now it'll be, you know, two homerooms may have to share a cart.
Well, I'm gonna say to you, order those now.
Okay.
You know, we've got the funds, you know, do it now. Don't, don't come back next year to the board and say, we need this. You know, I, that's just me, okay? But I'd like in the spreadsheet, you know, like tonight, we will approve the Blade server, you know, the storage carts, and then all of this that's, that's here in this $7,300,000 purchase, okay? And the other thing that I'd like to ask, you've got in here, staff MacBooks.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I'm not running for school board, so my term will end in November, but I'd like to see you order seven MacBooks for each board member in this order that you're getting ready to approve, so that the board members can start using that instead of all of this voluminous amount of paperwork that we get twice a month. I don't think it's unreasonable whatsoever to ask that the board go to using computers and having that screen in front of us.
I think you just made Kelly's month right there. I think you don't have any idea.
Well, no, no, we, we need to, to do this. And if I am reading it right and did the math right, we're talking about $5,400. So.
We'd save the paper and labor in, in, in two months.
Kelly, what do you spend on paper making all these copies in a month? I mean, just a guess. How many reams of paper do you use to?
Probably go through two reams. There's been times I've printed in a January 12 or 10 time.
Okay.
And I'm getting tired of using my printer at home to print all the things that, that we don't have. I know, I know. So would you please add, if there are no objections?
There is an objection. I do not allow MacBooks in my house.
I was gonna say, would you prefer a PC?
I will take a PC.
Or an iPad.
Oh, the MacBook's so much better, but I'm not gonna be on the board either, so it doesn't matter to me.
I'd just like to see this board go
Digital.
Into the 21st century with the computer in front of them, and so I could stop.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't object at all, Mr. Kennington, but we need to find out what kind of software we're gonna use for the digital board platform and make sure it supports which application. I mean, is it a PC or?
I feel that in Google Drive, you're having that charge.
Right, but there, there's applications out there that will do all of this for us. So we need to know, you know, what operating system will it support? If it's either one, then that's fine, but.
And seven more devices out of 1,800 is nothing, so I mean.
Well, I wouldn't tie it in with this.
Okay.
We need, I mean, in my opinion, I think it's a great idea. We've tried to do it before, but that's superintendent's.
Then put it on the agenda for March 14th or 15th. Find out what it's gonna be, et cetera, et cetera, what type of computers you want for the board, and, and bring that so we can vote on that next, next board meeting, please.
I, I do have a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The staff MacBooks, is this for K-8 staff, or does this include high school staff?
This is all staff.
Also, all staff wanted MacBooks.
Yeah, and this includes our support staff as well. In our previous leases, there were several groups of staff that did not get a device. Their department purchased their device. This pretty much includes everybody.
And he's staff, so he needs a MacBook.
We can.
Mr. Kennington, I do enjoy his comments and sitting beside him, but he's so wrong right now.
Let me ask one other question about, it's always included, insurance.
We are purchasing insurance.
We're, everybody likes to feel good with insurance, but that costs a fortune. So have we used, I mean, does the insurance pay for itself?
It does, and part of what we've struggled with this year is invoices for students who have damaged their devices, just getting them to pay has been a struggle. So this, having insurance for everything we're ordering for four years will eliminate most of that.
So this'll take care of students or parents having to pay for the insurance?
Yeah, unless it's intentional damage, and clearly intentional damage, it should be covered.
So the new technology fee will, there will not be an additional charge past the technology fee for insurance, as it currently is. The technology fee will encompass insurance, except for, I mean, as long as it's accidental insurance, not intentional.
All right, so that gets us to the presentations for items six, seven, and eight, then. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennington.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Schumaker, to suspend the rules and allow for voting on items during the Cal meeting. So then, we're clear to vote? Do I have a motion?
No, vote on that first.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry. Aye. All those opposed? So seven to nothing, that we would approve the motion to suspend the rules? Now, do I have a motion to approve items six, seven, and eight, either all together or individually, however you all wanna do that?
Chairman, I move we approve six, seven, and eight, as, with one vote.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Page, second by Mr. Kelly. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can I slip in seven, next?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Looks like that passed unanimously, so six, seven, and eight can be taken off the 14th agenda. Next, moving along then. Dr. Berry, personnel report discussed with us in closed session. Does anyone have a further question or comment for Dr. Berry about the personnel report? Personnel report be added to the consent agenda, then.
I was trying to get him back before he got up there.
Next, item agenda number 10, request for forgiveness of snow days. Dr. James?
Since the board approves the calendar, we did have some snow days, so I'm asking for permission to forgive those days. We already had enough hours built into the calendar. We do not need to make those up. So we'd be forgiving January 18th for the early colleges only, and January 19th for the other schools.
Make a motion that we forgive these days, snow days, these two, January 18th and January 19th.
Well, can we, we need to add that. Would it be okay, does any board member object to us putting this on the consent agenda for the 14th?
Consent agenda, sounds good.
Motion withdrawn. So we put that on the consent agenda for the 14th?
Absolutely.
Next, Dr. James?
State of the schools, so.
State of the schools.
I have media specialists here, the board did ask me, so this goes along prior to my presentation. And we'll, there's 30 slides, so I promise you I'll go through those quickly. But you guys actually asked about looking at our selection of instructional material. Here is a recommendation from our attorney on our current policy, amending it, and I'll ask Karen Van Vliet if she would come to the podium. She's our lead media specialist. So we have a process already in place at each school. If there's a question about instructional material, the principal can look at policy 3200. And all, all this does is the board's asked me to make it where the superintendent can also ask for reexamination of supplementary material. I will know that, note that nationwide, there's been questions about some of the library books that are across our nation, and I, I would like for Mrs. Van Vliet to at least give us an idea how we purchase library books, because I'm not sure the general public understands that. I don't think it's her reading list or mine, but we do house about 300,000 library books. And out of the lists that have been submitted to the board and I, I think we have about 33 books that were in question, so, Ms. Van Vliet.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Carver and members of the board. I've also brought with me this evening four other media coordinators within the district. Dana Gillis is at the Brawley School, Katie Moose represents our high school from West Iredell High School, Anita McMillan is Troutman Elementary School, and then Bethany Smith is Lakeshore Middle School. And they are here as well to help if there's any questions that are specific to a school or particular grade level. So as Dr. James said, we do actually have an existing policy with regards to both the selection and the objectives of books, library books, which are considered supplementary materials. We also have, in fact, a process in the event that any of these media center or library books are challenged. We actually have had one challenge so far this year. Generally, we like to handle all challenges at the school level between the complainant, which is the parent, and the principal. And in many, in most cases, it's resolved at that level. But in some cases, we do have where the parent wishes to appeal or go beyond the school level. And at that time, then the complainant or the parent must fill out what we call a reconsideration of materials forms. The, the parent would then fill out the form, submit it to a committee that is created by the principal at the school. This is a nine, nine-member committee, made up of various subject matter and grade levels. And this committee is then giving a copy of the book. Each member of the committee reads the books, they come together as a group to discuss the merit and the value of the book, and then they make a decision as to whether the book stays on the media center shelves or is removed from the media center shelves. In the event, in the case of the book that we had this year already, the committee did make the decision to keep the book on the shelf. The principal did communicate that to the parent. Had the parent wished to appeal that decision, then it would have been brought to Dr. James. But the parent did accept the decision of the committee. Now, with regards to the process of how the media coordinators select material for the media centers, that's an individual site-based decision. We have 31 different schools, made up of 31 different diverse populations, curriculums, because we have our IB curriculums, as well as our traditional curriculums, that have an influence on the selection of the books. We do follow the objectives that are lined out in our school board policy. And then in addition to that, we also look at what we call our recommended book list. So there are various professional resources that we use from the American Library Association, the School Library Journal, the State of North Carolina School Library Media Association also has a book list, the Young Adult Library Services Association, as well as books recommended by Scholastic, PermaBound, Mackin, Follett, and any other book vendor that is a state contract, on our state contract for book purchases.
So I believe that our discussion has been, if you're a student of Iredell State school's schools, you also can
Yes, sir.
Get books out of the public library.
Public library, yes. So we do have an agreement with the public libraries, it's called student access. All of our students, their student ID number is, in fact, their public library number. So students can go online, look at books at the public library, request them, and then the public library actually curves them to our individual campuses. And then we, in turn, deliver those books to the students. Since October, our students across the district have requested 805 books from Iredell County Public Libraries to be delivered to our campuses.
And I believe one of the concerns that was brought to my attention, of course, pornography. So we have our attorney present. So Ms. Leonard, the word pornography would typically mean something that's a picture, a drawing, or caricature of a sex act, or degradation of a, a particular masculine or feminine person. So I, I think our media specialist can say that does not exist in our collection. So we definitely want to assure the public that we don't purchase pornography. It does not exist. There are very different venues of books. And I think my recommendation to the board, since we, we have a list of about 33 books that have been questioned, is to look at this recommendation for next week, and that would allow me, as the superintendent, to initiate a review team for each one of these books. That will take some time, because the, the purpose is also to have the team read the book, so I will have to purchase some additional books. But my, of course, the other concern would be, and I would tell all parents, you, you really need to be cognizant of what your child does check out, because even if we took the book off the shelf, they still could order it from the public library. And if you were listening to the still could order it from the public library. And if you were listening to the radio show today, January was Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and so a conversation that I had with an expert from Safe House Project was the fact that human trafficking occurs more often than not on social media, and that occurs through the things that a lot of us have on our hips. So this is a direct access to a lot of things that we probably don't want our kids to see, and it's not filtered, because if you're on a service with AT&amp;T, Verizon, et cetera, it does not get filtered through our school system. So again, if there's truly a concern about what our kids have access to, then I would also ask the board to consider a cell phone policy on our campuses, if that's truly the goal of what we're trying to accomplish. Some of these books, I have the checkout number. Some of these books have checked out one time, two times. Some of the books that I read is way back in the day. So, I think, again, it should be a parent's prerogative to question what their child's checking out. That can always be got, just like your cafeteria charges. If you ask the media specialist, she can run exactly what your child has checked out. I will say that part of the public's input with my office has been about securing our kids. We are under the Child Protection Internet Act, SEPA. So we have to filter things that our devices go home. So all these devices we're getting ready to purchase has an artificial intelligence filter in it. So if a child gets to it today, they won't get to it tomorrow. And that's a nationwide company that provides this service. In the future, parents will be able to actually log in, set up an account. So if I happen to be one of your children, you can actually see Eversight. I attempted to search, not actually got to, but attempted to search. So another way for us to provide some protection since that has been a concern across our nation, and we are obligated through receiving federal money to make sure we comply with SEPA. So that said, my recommendation to the board would be to read this policy, and then I can implement the thirty-three books that are in question. It will take some time to do that, and then we can report out periodically as we go through them. But I would also ask the board to consider cell phone use in our schools, and what you want to do about safeguarding kids from being able to access material here we cannot filter or protect kids from. Thank you.
Board member comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, we don't raise children, even though our school systems have been charged in that many cases. And we certainly don't want to have books in our libraries that are pornographic. And of course, everybody's level is different. We're all raised differently, and we come from different backgrounds. And what is pornographic to you may not be to me. But I would like to say this. We, Dr. James and some of our staff has been under immense pressure from certain citizens in the community. And I want to say this. You don't have the right, as an individual, to walk into our schools and demand to see a book. Now, if you're a parent, you go through the proper procedure, you can go into the school. But you, as an individual that has nothing to do with the school, you're not in law enforcement. You don't have a right to walk in our schools. And I don't appreciate certain people thinking that they can walk in our school. I mean, today is a different world than it was in nineteen sixty-five, because we have people out there that would have harmed children, and we have to be responsible for security. I dare say, well, a lot of everybody's younger than I. So, I never remember seeing police officers in school to guard us, which is something that most every school has today, because of what has happened. Therefore, I say again, you do not have the right to go in a school just because you want to look at a book, unfortunately. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of clarifications, if I may, and thank you so much for coming, and thank all of you for coming tonight, and bless you for what you do. Clarify for me, please. I think you said that if a parent objected to a book, the first person would be the media coordinator and the principal would review it. Is that correct?
Right. They would just have an informal conversation with regards to their concerns.
And if the parent still objected, they would go to a committee?
Yes. So at that point, the principal would then inform both myself and the superintendent that there was a parent who wished to file a complaint, and we have.
And is that a system-wide committee?
It's a committee at the school. So the individuals, the principal would form the committee at the school.
At the school. And what would be the composition of that committee?
So it would be an odd number, nine, and it would be made up of members from various subject areas. So you would, you would have maybe a science person, an English person, PE, health, math, people of various backgrounds, and of course, from different grade levels.
No parent is on that committee?
That is correct.
That's what I hear, okay.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, if the parent still objects, the next level?
Superintendent.
To the superintendent. And the superintendent has final say-so on that? I haven't read your proposed policy, so I don't know.
Well, the existing policy, the way it is now, is the superintendent would form a committee, and then, from there, again, make a decision. And if the parent didn't like it, then it would be appealed to the school board.
Okay, okay.
Yes, who currently resides at the school. So the revision to the policy would allow me to have input and the principal. So typically, a parent has to, currently, current policy is a parent has to bring a concern. The revision to the policy would be a principal or the superintendent could bring a concern. So since I've, you know, been given thirty-three books that are of concern, then the revision to the policy then would allow me to set up multiple committees. So you can imagine with thirty-three books, it's going to take a while to read them. So, once, we, and of course, books are in multiple schools. So we would divvy out which school wants to take which book for a challenge, and then that team would report back to me on their decision, and I would report back to the parent. Then at that point, if the parent still disagrees, they can appeal it to the board.
And the composition of your committee?
It would be similar to the school.
To the school. Would a parent be on that one?
We typically don't include parents, because it would have, it would be one parent trying to, that's sort of the problem we have. We have parents trying to tell other parents what their kids can't read. And I think therein's the issue that we, but parents do serve on our school improvement teams currently, so they do have input into the school process and materials they purchase, et cetera.
The other thing that you mentioned that I wasn't sure of, as far as ordering books for schools, did I hear you say that that's thirty-six individual people within that building ordering the school books for that school, library books for that school?
We have thirty-one media centers run by thirty-one professional media coordinators. It is the media coordinator's responsibility, as tasked by the principal, to order the appropriate books for the media center.
So we don't have any coordination at each level, whether the high schools' media coordinators don't try to be the same?
Now, again, because our.
Middle school the same, elementary the same?
Well, there, yes, there is some. There is some overlap. But again, for example, Ms. Gillis is at the Brawley IB School, where Ms. Smith is at Lake Shore Middle School. Their curriculums are vastly different. The IB School tends to focus on more global, global, current controversial issues that impact society at large, whereas Lake Shore Middle School is guided more by the North Carolina standards. So each school, and then we might have a school, for example, Statesville High School, that has a different ethnic makeup. So we buy schools based on many, many factors, from age, to maturity, to curriculum, to student makeup, in order to find those reading materials that the kids, we would drive them to be interested in reading.
Okay, thank you. And I'd just say to you, Dr. James, that I certainly agree with you, and other board members, from the standpoint of, you know, parents have got to assume some responsibility here, because we can do all we want to. And I didn't realize that we couldn't do anything with the phones, as far as what kids are looking at on their phones at school. I thought we did have some type of security. We have that on the computers, that they can't do that, I realize. And that's a problem, because you can say what you want to. I've got five grandsons, and you ought to see the expression on their face when I ask them what sites they look at. They don't want to tell me. And that tells me everything I wanted to know.
Unfortunately, cell phones are part of the reason for divorces.
Well, so if there's something that we can do to, are you saying there is something that we can get in the school system to prevent that type of use on a cell phone within the building?
We can look into that, absolutely. We can either prevent the signal, so the service will not work. The problem with putting them on our network is the bandwidth, so we'd have to look into that. But if we can log them into our network, then we would have some access. And actually, my guest today spoke about an app that she encouraged every parent to put on their child's phone. It's called Spark. That will allow you to turn, you can tell wherever your child goes. And I would tell you, I've done IT all my life, like, like Dr. Knight. There's not a filter out there, out there that a child cannot get around. I taught network engineering for years, and the fun of that was, is the kids trying to outguess me all the time, and ask me what my daughter's name was, and what my dog's name was, and trying to guess my password. And so it is hard to filter things out. The reason we like light speed for our computers, it has an AI engine, which is state-of-the-art. In California, if a child tonight goes to a site in California, their filter picks it up and determines it's an inappropriate site. It's already blocked the next morning here on the East Coast. So, we're doing a lot of work in that area, but we will investigate how we could actually allow parents to let us provide some of that with their phones. We would love to, because we'd like parents to know where their child is surfing. And of course, again, with human trafficking, it occurs through gaming. One of the things that I did not realize this morning, and the conversation was, a lot of kids that are on games, the chat feature of a game is where pedophiles start grooming our children in sex trafficking. And so it was very alarming. It was a great program this morning, and I commend our staff. We, she said this morning, we were nationwide, had done the whole On Watch program, which is huge, and it's great, great material. I encourage parents to do it. But I think we all have to be cognizant of what our children are getting to, and I'm not sure the thirty-three library books we have are as detrimental as some other things out there. I'm not, I'm not placating that. We will set up a process. We'll go through them, and I understand that. But I would ask parents to be involved with what your child surfs and checks out of the media center, because again, if we take it off the shelf, they still can order it from the library.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Mr. Kenning, just a couple of things. One, just to piggyback, chat apps, like you're talking about, gaming, gamers have their own chat apps. It's not just Snapchat. Discord's one of them. There's different ones out there, and you guys probably know them. I know a few of them from my sons and my daughter. Do we have, we have suppressors still at some of the high schools, though? Is that true? Towers, so we suppress cell phone signal? Do we have those?
It's typically the building where you have a lot of metal at. You just cannot.
So the building itself acts as a?
Right, and staff stuff is about that more than anyone, because your staff's cell phone doesn't work either, but we give them access to the network.
Let me hold it. Let me step in here. Let's play with the books at this time. And if there's a conversation to be had with the cell phones, and what we can and cannot block, should and should not block, I'm still thinking there are amendments that probably cover that, let's discuss that another time. We are discussing at this particular time what's in our libraries, what's in a book form, that BOOK thing, what is that, Bound Optical, Optional Kaleidoscope, a book. So let's look at what that is and decide what we're doing here, which we're working on that resolution. Before we open up another can of worms, let's look at this one. Keep these separate at this time. Can we do that?
I do have a question on books, if you don't mind. That was, if the committee you put together, Dr. James, could you overrule the committee's recommendation, the way the policy is or will currently be set up?
Yes. My question on the, on the review process is that if you determine, what I don't want to see happen is this, have a group to say that a book is good at Lake Norman High School, but it's not good at West Iredale High School. So I want that to be a district-wide decision. Particularly on these thirty-three books that everybody's, you know, wanting us to take a look at. So.
That's how the process is currently. So, for example, if a book is challenged at Lake Norman High School, and if they, that committee decides that that book is not appropriate for the media center, then we pull it from all media centers.
Okay, excellent, excellent. And that's, to me, that's common sense. I just wanted to make sure that's the way we're doing it.
So it does not have to go through each committee at each one of those five schools?
Correct.
You're going to pull it, if it's not good for Lake Norman, you're going to pull it in the other ones?
Yes.
If it happens to be there?
That's correct.
Next, just as, I really didn't, wasn't aware of this till this week. I found myself at the library talking to a librarian, and she was telling me about the list of books. I think, is it March every year that y'all do a thing about books that have been on banned lists at some point in time every year? Does that sound right?
Of September is banned.
September.
Book Week from the American Library Association.
Would you please give us some of the titles of books that we would, under today's standards, say, wait a minute, that, that book was banned?
Harry Potter.
Okay.
Is one of the books that's on the list.
There's some more, though, that these people are going to know. I want you to.
Oh, yeah.
So, give me some more.
To Kill a Mockingbird.
To Kill a Mockingbird.
Night.
Catcher in the Rye.
Catcher in the Rye.
Hamlet.
These are all books?
When I say banned, that's, that's a, that's a hard word. What those books are, they're not banned, because as a country, we don't ban books. We challenge books, but we don't ban books. So the American Library Association puts out a list of the top one hundred, they call it banned books, but really what it means is, it's the top one hundred books that are being challenged across the country, because our Fifth Amendment and our democratic society does not allow us to ban books. We don't do that as a country. Reading is a choice. It is an option. It is a freedom of expression. And so, again, I need you to understand, when we're banning something, we're really challenging it. We can ban it at the school level, though, by pulling it.
We do have, we do have folks, though, who are, are in effect, saying, you shouldn't have that book in that library.
That is correct.
And so for that moment in time, for me, at least I have to go to another library to try and find it, or I have to go to some other source. And so I think it's important, and my whole point to that is that there are a whole lot of books out there that we consider to be mainstream, very much a part of American life, that at some point in time have been viewed as, wait a minute, that's verboten. We shouldn't do that.
That is correct.
And, and that what we say today may be totally different three or four years from now. So we need to be careful with this. This is a slippery slope.
And on some lists, if I'm not mistaken, too, on some lists somewhere in the country, they have challenged Tom Sawyer, Uncle Barry Finn, and like you say, To Kill a Mockingbird? Oh, come on. So, you have to watch what you.
That's why I wanted you to know that, because I know you've, you've read that.
And the other thing I need you to know about that list of thirty-three books, it is, not all of them are being challenged for their sexual content. There are other issues in there that the parents are challenging.
What are those other issues, just after you?
Racism is, could be one of them. Use of language, explicit use of language, which they hear it on the television every day. Those are probably the three biggest ones is, when you say those are the three biggest challenges, what?
Religion.
Religion, right. That would be our other one.
So, and then my final point, I just want to, I'm glad you're all here. I just want to say thank you for the work that you do. These are tough times for lots of people out there, and just, be still, be calm, you know, as best we can to, you know, to, don't, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. We're going to get through this, and I just want to encourage you in that regard, because what you do is important. What you do is important work for our children. So please be patient with this process.
Can I just leave you with a positive note? I ran a little bit of numbers, and I just want to let you know that in the month of February alone, over twenty-five thousand books were checked out from your thirty-one media centers in the district. Since the start of the school year, a hundred and sixty thousand books have been checked out. Since the start of the school year, 160,000 books have been checked out. So our children are reading. And if those 175,000 parents aren't complaining about those books that have been read, it says a lot about, I want parents involved with their children when they read. That's our final.
Could I ask one, one more?
Yes, sir.
A breakdown on that number as to how many of those books were checked out in an elementary school? As opposed to a middle school? As opposed to a high school?
Yes, sir.
Because I have a feeling a whole lot more checked out in K through five than anywhere else.
Yes, you are absolutely right. I think of that 25,000, 25,000 for the month of February, 12,000 of that was at the elementary school level.
Okay.
I would like to say that if you take a book out of the library, you can be assured it's going to be read. Absolutely. Because you tell somebody they can't do it, they're going to do it.
You picked it up off the shelf. Not, not one jumped in my bag when I went in there this week, so.
Mr. Chairman, quick, quickly, I want to thank Dr. James for taking this matter seriously because it is a serious matter and it should be considered. And I appreciate him updating the, uh, policy that I assume that we'll vote on next month. I think it's, uh, it, it shows that he is listening and is, is trying to do the right thing. And, and I think we all are.
Is that the conclusion of your state of the schools or were you going to go to that or? Absolutely not. Okay, good deal.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I'm not, and, and Mr. Chairman, I'm not quite finished. Just, just one more thing. I, I do have a suggestion on the 33 books. And, you know, you can consider this if you want to, but I think some of those have not been checked out in a number of years. Out of those that have not been checked out, can we just not say, we're going to purge those books? And it'll eliminate, at least reduce the number that have to be reviewed if that process goes through?
Absolutely, because the media specialists say if I'll fund them to buy new books, they will purge these old books, absolutely. So in next year's budget, I think we put about $50,000 in to supplement what schools spend on books. And I would tell you, you need a robust library, especially with K eight. So in some of the books, most of the books that look like they're being challenged typically are either seventh grade through 12th grade. And, and we do consider that, the age of the student when we do place a book somewhere.
Just real quickly, are these hard cut, hardbound or PDFs or electronic?
Hardbound. Generally by, um, our book vendors sell us what's called a library binding book. So it's not a paperback nor is it a hardback. It's more of a real hard pressed cover because it provides us with, um, if, if at any time the damage, the book becomes damaged, dog chews on it, kid spills his water on it, our book vendor will replace it for free for us.
Do we, uh, does the library system use any like e-readers or things like that with kids or kids asking for PDFs?
We do have eBooks and we do have apps within our current devices, our laptops. So the students, if they wish, they can download an eBook. Again, they can download an eBook from the public library on their devices. We do have reading apps as well.
So if we're done with this, if you'll direct your attention to return, return on investment. Thank you Karen and guys for coming tonight. So one of the things that Chairman Carver and I talked about, this presentation we do with the county commissioners and hopefully get out to the township. So next slide, Jada's. So our strategic focus, we have a 2025, we have a strategic plan. It's to eliminate opportunity gaps, improve school and district performance and increase educator preparedness to meet the need of every child. And I will say that Iroh Statesville Schools had the highest academic performance in its history this past two years during the pandemic. So if you look at our budget with, with federal money, it comes out to about $295,000. So we again are, we are the. Millions, I'm sorry, million, not thousand. Wow. So again, it's about 42% of the tax base. And as Mr. Page has said, that has been as high as 48%. But we do not, we as a school system do not get the 42%. That's total education budget. So Mitchell College gets part of this budget and Mooresville graded school district. So we're also taxed to pay charter schools. So any charter schools that are in our district, the money flows through us. So we're responsible to, for ADM to pay charter schools. So we get about 32% of the county's local budget for ISS and we turn around and spend out about 4% of that to charter schools. So if you look at the average daily membership, here's where Iroh Statesville Schools falls. Sort of in comparison to other school systems across the state. Alamance Burlington and Buckham County are two that are close to us. And of course, Royan Salisbury is a little smaller. Next slide. Uh, if you look at per pupil funding, did you notice the difference? We're at the very bottom when it comes to per pupil funding from the state. So I think Mr. Steele just mentioned that. Seems to be a little difficult getting money from the state. So we're at the very bottom when you look at similar sized school systems. Money does make a difference. So if you look at per pupil funding, again, 19, 20 and 19 and 20 school year, again, we're at the very bottom when it comes from the state. Next slide. So if you look at total county per pupil funding, tier three counties, which that's what we are. We're growing economically by leaps and bounds. So if you look at the, how we're funded as a school system, we're a little bit below middle of the pack. Next slide. And again, there's a percent of the total budget for education, 42.13%. Again, that's Mitchell College included and Mooresville graded school system. Look at Union County. What could we do if we had those, that, that amount of money? Wow, next. So when you look at it, $295 million, we're about $14,000 per pupil and that's, that's looking at all monies that we receive. But again, we're, we're towards the bottom of that group. And if you look at tier three counties, we're below the middle of the pack. So thoughts on poverty in public education? I've said this many times, there's 40 years worth of data that as poverty goes up, proficiency goes down. Doesn't matter how much money you throw at it. So I've always said poverty is the enemy of education. And I liked the last phrase, think about it, every educated person is not rich, but almost every educated person has a job and a way out of poverty. So education is a fundamental solution to poverty. Next. If you look at school performance grades in North Carolina bought into this A through F grading system. If you'll look at free and reduced lunch, that's the bottom number. When you go over about 50% free and reduced lunch, proficiency numbers drop. And that goes back to my, my prior comment that when poverty goes up, proficiency goes down. Again, there's 40 years worth of data. Next slide. And again, if you look at, you know, we talk about ACT and SAT scores, one of the biggest determinants is your family income. And there's a lot of reasons on why. Of course, if you're not in poverty, you, you typically have more family input. You have more resources available to be more prepared to take the ACT. So there's a staggering difference when you look at less than 80,000 and greater than 80,000 when it comes to ACT scores. Next slide. Uh, membership, if you look at our membership trends since 2017, we are actually starting to go up. We're about 84% of the market in Iroh County. And we're seeing charter schools have leveled off and starting to drop in public schools. And where there's economic growth and there's a good public school system, we're seeing growth starting to start back up in public schools. ISS low income percentages, and I will tell you that 2020 and 2021 forward, those numbers are not correct because of the pandemic. Everybody gets, so what happens is if you're getting free breakfast and free lunch, you're not going to fill out the form because it doesn't matter. So we are around about 42% free and reduced lunch in Iroh County. Next slide. So a great education system has a significant impact on the economic viability of a county. So industry will not locate here if there's not qualified and prepared workers to enter industry and also to take white collar jobs. So decreased crime rates, increased property values, increased earning potential. Next slide. The sources, a lot of these are at the bottom of the slides if anybody wants the presentation. But if you look at this early childhood spending, I think several of us have preached this for quite a while. You can't go wrong investing in a child early on. So in, universal pre-K would make a huge difference in the number of kids leaving third grade reading on grade level. Next slide. So return on investment, that's what most people understand. So we just looked at several pieces of data. We're out, we're academically performing higher than most other districts, our same size, but getting a lot less funding. Graduation rate, if you look here, um, we're above the state. Buckham County outperforms us. Next slide. Dropout rate is just another way of looking at the data. You want to be at the left-hand side of this slide. So we're near the bottom when it comes to dropouts. Next slide. Performance composite index compared to the other schools that you just saw were, were funded more than us, we're actually outperforming them. So again, return on your investment. We're making efficient use of every dollar you give us to make sure we close the academic gaps in our school system. So here's just another way to look at it. We had the least amount of learning loss in the state. So that's basically what the slide shows. There's 116 school systems. Iroh Statesville Schools had the least amount of learning loss in, in the state. And actually, we were featured on NPR radio with Andos Hamz with an hour program several months back, trying to ascertain what we had done differently that, that helped us educate kids. And one of the things we keep saying is we put kids back in a seat as soon as we could. So again, looking at the counties that are much more well-funded than we are because of local taxes and state taxes, they get more. We perform above the state. So again, a good return on your investment. SAT scores, so Iroh Statesville is right at the top. So all these are indicators of success academically. And, and I believe at the end of the day, it's about the kids and about academic success and preparing them for the future. Whether it be the workforce, it's always the workforce, whether it be going on to community college or four-year. ACT composite scores, again, above the state, ahead of other districts. Similar size. Okay, Jada. So elementary choice programs, and here's where we hit a home run as a district. We, we have every choice program known to man. And actually, I misquoted on the radio, I thought we had about 4,000 students. It's actually about 7,200 in choice programs. But Leader and Me, those are the two schools, we have Leader and Me, it's a Covey. That's been in business world for many, many years. It's a character education traits to make kids successful. Uh, in the industry, Covey come out doing a lot of training back in the business world. And corporations that did this training were, seemed to be much more successful. Dual immersion program, we have two schools. IB World School, we have two. Then are Cloverleaf and Cottle Creek. Those are early years programs. Dual immersion is at East Iroh Elementary and Lake Norman Elementary. And of course, one of the areas that, uh, Lake Norman Elementary School is actually pretty well at capacity. We have an A-plus art school, that's at Scott's. If you've never been in an A-plus art school, I would challenge you to call the principal and, and take a tour. It's pretty neat. STEM focus, Suleus, Harmony, Lakeshore. And Lakeshore Elementary is recognized by the state for its STEM program. Career Technical School, we're sitting there now. The credentials that kids leave us with each year, 3,200 credentials. And those are, you can hang your hat on that. You can go into an, an industry with that credential and you're already ahead of the competition. So 42% of our seniors not only get a diploma, but they walk across the stage with some form of credential, which is very important in today's market. Early colleges have three of those. IB program, South Iroh High School, we're getting ready to start one in the fall. Another high school program at Statesville High. We also have Northview and the Brooly IB Schools, the two IB middle programs. Pre-AP Academy is at West Middle and the AP Academy is at West High. Then we have a Fine Arts Magnet at Statesville High School. Total membership in choice programs, 7,400 students. 37% of our kids are in a choice program. So please, when it's bad weather, I cannot shut down the northern end, the southern end, the western end. If I do, it affects 7,400 kids. We have, that's almost, we, we transport 12,000 students. So actually, over 50% of our students go to a choice program. So next slide. Uh, type of programs offered in career technical education, we have 106 different programs. I challenge anyone to have that many different venues for our kids to learn. Ag program, business ed, marketing, health science, family consumer science, 36 trade and industry programs. Uh, our automotive program is taking national recognition, continues to. College and career promise courses are, are dual enrollment. So your child gets credit for college and for the course that we teach. So you get dual credit. Uh, welding here, manicuring, EMT, HVAC, uh, starting this fall, electrical wiring. So quite a few programs. So next slide. I think it's got return on investment on the next one, Jada. There we go. So this is a return on investment. These are nationwide data points. You definitely want your school system to have a positive rate of return. And if you look at us, it's .69. The next slide puts it out in figures. We average .69, so that's a great return on investment. The average scores are .48. So we're actually higher than our surrounding counties that are similar size. So Royan Salisbury School has a negative rate of return. So if you're watching, I'm not trying to beat up my fellow superintendent. Gaston County, Cabarrus, Iroh County and Davie County. So again, positive rate of return. You look at these, some of these are county schools. When you do factor in city schools with some of these, it rings their numbers down. That's typically where, where a lot of your poverty lies. So counties that include city schools tend to have a little bit lower scores, but look how we compare to surrounding counties. Next slide. And again, comparing us to charter schools, the top, the top highest performing schools in Iroh County are our, our early colleges. The next one would be Pine Lake Preparatory, uh, Lake Norman High School and then South Iroh High School. Out of 38 schools, we have one complete virtual school, K-12, so 37. Uh, other schools out of those, we have 17 elementary schools. Every elementary school we had exceeded growth. And for business minded people, that means you're performing at 100% or close to it. We only had four schools out of 38 that did not meet or exceed growth out of 38 schools, and that is phenomenal. Next slide. So our ethnicity, if you look at it by school, we tend to have more diverse student populations than the charter schools that compete with us. You can look at economically disadvantaged. So if you compare us to Pine Lake, they did outperform us academically, but they have less than 5% economically disadvantaged students. So this is a telltale number of performance again. So here's performance grades, if you look at them, the top three, ASAC, Crossroads, CCTL, then Pine Lake, Lake Norman, Mooresville High School, Langtree. And there's the, the composite grades that we give. And if you look down at the bottom, growth status, our, we either met or exceeded at our three early colleges. Lake Norman High School exceeded, Mooresville did, Langtree did not, and Pine Lake met. You always want your schools to exceed growth if at all possible. Next slide. So four high schools earned a national and metro area ranking. And there they are. There's their ranking in North Carolina and ranking in Iroh Statesville. And that was US News and World Report. We had two middle schools, Brooly IB School and Oakwood. Brooly IB ranked fourth in the state of North Carolina. Next slide. Six elementaries, there's their ranking. Next slide. And here's how we performed when it comes to, you look at, we're way over in the blue, so that's exceeded growth. The only area we did not meet was third grade reading. And we sort of questioned that because out of 83 teachers, we only had two that didn't meet growth. So we're trying to figure that one out ourselves. So I do have some questions into the state. So if I can find that money, Mr. Kennington, I'll also see if we can figure out what happened in third grade. Next slide. Financial ranking, out of 115 school systems, we were seventh. Value add score, fifth in this past 2020, 2021. Academic, you can look there, 12th. But economically disadvantaged ranking, we went from 77th to 33rd in the state. Graduation rates is something we have to work on. They did get worse during the pandemic, which is across the state. So, value add score looks at per people funding and economically disadvantaged students and looks at academic performance. We've been doing this number for about 15 or 20 years. This is the best number we've accomplished in the history of the school system, seventh in the state. Next slide. There's the data sources, and I believe that concludes my presentation. Thank you, Chairman Carver.
Board member comments, questions for Dr. James?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. Superintendent, will this be public knowledge and available for the public?
Yes, we can post it on the website.
I was going to say, I'd like to see it up on our website.
Absolutely.
Maybe under the heading return on investment. I think that was an excellent title for your presentation there. Thank you for bringing us that information. I think that was some really good quality, data-driven analysis of where we're at. Item, agenda, or agenda item number 12, McGray Sound Booth, stair access quote, Mr. Ivy.
Chairman Carver, Dr. James, members of the board. This project was started back in 2020 and was essentially paused, I believe, due to the pandemic. Was picked back up this year. Essentially, if you've ever been to McGray Auditorium and tried to access the sound booth, you have to scale a ladder up a wall and then come back down that ladder. We have had employees who have been hurt in the process of getting up and down to have access to the sound booth. So, what this project entails is us adding a set of stairs on one side and a chair lift to be able to make the upstairs area and the balcony and sound booth ADA compliant. So, we have gone through the bid process, and I do appreciate you guys adding this on to the end of the agenda. If we follow our current bid process, it looks like we would be awarding Kerry Builders the project. Their bid came in $163,500. So, would be seeking approval from this and do have the ability to wait until the next meeting for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, we have to have a chair lift even though the building's been in existence?
Yes, you have to be able to make sure that somebody could get to upstairs in a wheelchair. And so, this is not a full-on elevator. This is a chair lift like what you essentially see at, at Oakwood if you toured over there.
Yes, sir. Wow. And so, again, why was this not in there when we bid two rounds of renovations for that place?
Yes, sir. I do not know how to answer that since my official start date was July 1 of this year.
So, you don't have an answer for that?
I just want you to know, sir, that my motto moving forward is try to do the job right the first time so we don't have to come back second time if possible. Not that it wasn't done right, but I don't know the reasons why that wasn't picked, whether it was funding or some other thing. I just don't have that knowledge.
You know, I'm just reiterating, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Other board member questions on this agenda item number 12?
Not necessarily on, on the agenda item, Mr. Chairman, but since Mr. Ivy said he's brand new, I'd just like to ask about the bid process. How are bids advertised?
So, these bids are advertised, and I don't know the exact organization. Mr. Hager can tell you that for sure. But it's advertised to a organization that sends it out. It's wide cast. We have a bid meeting. The companies who wish to issue a bid come into that meeting. We go over the exact protocols of what we're looking for to make sure everybody's in understanding. And the bids come in, the bids have to be vetted to make sure that they're actually going to be able to do the scope of the work and include everything that was done. And then we bring those bids back to you.
And in that process, are the bid advertisements in the papers, local paper?
I don't believe they use the local paper at this point. They use a different process now. It's an organization. And I'm not sure if Mr. Ladd has any further details on that. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact name of that.
Is, is it Dodge Report or something like that?
I believe so, yeah.
I think there are, and maybe more, but at least three commercial builders in Iroh County. GL Wilson, Kerry Builders, and I think PS West Building. I'd like to see this school system at least advertise in newspapers. And I'd like to see that those three builders receive a fax, email, phone call or something, that the bid process is for X.
I'll be glad to look into that. I know that there are some restrictions on what you can and can't do as far as calling people to tell them or notifying a person to tell them that a bid is out, but we have to publicly bid it. So, I know, I, I just want to check with the law.
Yeah, I don't care what the law says. Well, I do care what the law says. I apologize. No, I don't. I really don't. What I care about is I'd like for the local builders in Iroh County to be aware of a bid. Do what?
Actually...
Sure is, the slowest bid. But, you know, I just want them to be aware that there is this bid out there if they choose to bid on it.
Absolutely. GL Wilson actually gets a lot of her projects.
Oh, I know that.
So, well, I think they know.
First time I seen Kerry Builders get, get even their name. I looked them up on the internet and saw they were from Mooresville. That's what generated my thought. I've never seen PS West on a bid, even though I know they did a lot of renovation to this building many years ago. My, my issue is I just want to be sure that the local contractors know that there is a bid out there. And if they want to bid on it, fine. If they don't, or I should say a project out there. And I'd just like for them to be notified that this project is out there to be bid.
Thank you, Mr. Kennington. Any other comments on agenda item 12?
Let me ask, and just in picking up some words. So, we're saying we're going to build a set of steps and a chair lift to the booth, the, the control booth. A set of steps and a chair lift is $163,000.
Yes, sir, to make sure that it fits.
I don't, I, thank you.
It's $163,500.
Any further questions, Mr. Ivy? Agenda item 12. Thank you. Then we'll put that on the agenda for March the 14th. At that point, then, our next, any other business coming before the board? Board member updates? Only other updates I'm aware of is the, our next board meeting will not be next week like it would normally be, but it's the following week on the 14th. Tried to reiterate that a few times tonight. I'll just go ahead and also read Across Americas this week. You're encouraged to get out, go to your local elementary schools and read to some of the children at those, at those schools. And I want to ask Dr. James, I noticed we don't, we're not having a COVID discussion this month. Are we required to, I think it changed, didn't it? There was once, we didn't have to have it.
Well, well, unfortunately, we were told that the governor was going to support Free the Smiles Act, Bill 173. And he decided to veto it. So, you still have to vote each month if you're going to mask or not.
So, let me ask then our attorney, is it okay if, could we add that to our consent agenda if we all were in agreement to, to maintain the status quo right now?
Sure.
Is there any board member who would object to us putting that on the consent agenda to leave our mask policy as optional at this time? Hearing none. Can we put that on the consent agenda and make sure that that's put out there so folks know that that's going to happen on the 14th then? Those are the comments I had. Other board member comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask Superintendent. Now, I heard that we didn't have to wear a mask on bus anymore. Is that true?
Yes, that's absolutely true. The CDC come out with that. But when y'all made the motion several weeks ago, I couldn't legally tell people not to wear a mask on a bus. Let's just say wink, wink, non, non.
Okay, okay. All right. That's just, I, I just wanted to be sure of that. I also want to say that the CDC came out last week and said, hey, we didn't give you the right numbers. Our numbers were taken from somewhere else. And we didn't think that, speaking of us, the general public could handle the truth. So, I just wanted to say that.
Other board member comments?
Just...
Go ahead, Dr. Knight.
Quick comment. Just, you know, my only comment is pray for the people Ukraine and the Russian soldiers that do not want to be there. And I guess to the teachers, staff and students, you've got a week. I've got a week. That's, my college is out that week. I tell my students to recharge your batteries that week for the final run. I'm going to recharge mine and I hope you enjoy your break.
Dr. James, any further comments? Hearing no further comments. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We adjourn?
Have a motion and a second by Mr. Howell. To adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Thank you.